Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the June 13th Board of Selectmen's meeting. I'll read the agenda. Seven o'clock we'll have citizens input, seven oh five approve sign town manager's contract, seven fifteen we'll have a public hearing MPS LLC regarding the YouTube concert, the Joshua Tree Tour on June 25th. We'll have the Personnel Board, a presentation of Personnel Board Policies for Adoption by the Board of Selectmen. Seven forty-five Selectmen's update, seven fifty-five Town Manager's update, eight oh five Assistant Town Manager's update, and then we have a bunch of action items. Jim will be leading us.
Seven twenty-five?
Yeah, about seven twenty-five. Can you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just after seven o'clock, is anybody here for citizens input? No? Okay. Seven oh five, approve, sign, Town Manager's contract. Okay. Any vote?
Do you want me to say it? I was kind of counting on you on this one.
Over the last few weeks, through executive session, we've been negotiating with our Town Manager to enter into a new contract. And just, I think we've, as a board, have come to an agreement. It's a three-year contract effective July 1, 2017, which will run through June 30, 2020, with a two-year option, if I remember correctly, would have to be exercised 2019?
Right, yeah, the year before, one year before.
One year before. The average salary, the average increase in salary is about 2.6% over the three years. Each year will be a 2.6% increase. As far as other benefits, there's a, after year one, there's an increase in vehicle allowance, which will be for the remaining two years of the contract. And then...
The life insurance?
I think that was it.
That's the same.
Yeah, so life insurance stays as it was in the last contract.
So that was the only change, salary and car.
And all the other terms of the previous contract carry forward. So that's it in a nutshell. Any comments before we put it to a formal vote?
Yeah, I just wanted to say something. And I'm going to vote against it, and I just want an explanation because it's not reflective of Bill's tenure here with us. I've got to say that we've had a number of executive sessions with Bill and without Bill. It's probably one of the best review processes I've been through here. Speaking for the board, it was very positive. You've got the utmost respect for your staff and the position that you hold throughout the state and the different credentials. The issue I have with the contract, and nothing that I haven't said during the meetings, what was on the table, which, similar to this, which I liked and I wanted to stick to, but I understand, it is what it is on the board. I lost on it, but I wanted across the board 2% rather than the average of 2.6. And the reason being, and again, it's not reflective of your performance, in understanding when you came from Dedham, you had a, basically a year that you didn't take a raise from Dedham to here. But the board was, I think, generous in the 4%, 4.5% leading up to here. The position that we put our Town Manager in is if you look across comparable towns in the list that we got, if you take out the Wellesley and the Concord and the Bedford, you are the highest paying Town Manager on that list. And if you look at the demographics for the towns that are on that list that are around us and a little far-reaching, we have less of population of many and certainly less of a town budget. So the people that are supporting by taxes everyone's salaries is less than what we're seeing out there for other Town Managers. And some towns it's substantial, other ones you're right at it. Fortunately or unfortunately, in this position, it sets the bar across the town with the unions and other high-end department heads. So that what we're doing for Bill is going to, and I've seen it in the past, going to raise everybody's expectations for salaries. And it's either going to make that differential between the average staff and the high-end staff more, or everyone's going to come up. And it's similar to what I was trying to portray in the last, over the last year on the taxes. I think we're paying a lot in kind of going in a direction where I think it's high. So, performance-wise, relationship-wise, evaluation-wise, the best I've had in my experience here. But I think unfortunately, you're in a position that I want to see pushing down at that level throughout the town. And if this keeps going up, I've seen everyone else go up, and it's going to, it is unsustainable in my opinion, and how people disagree. So that's why I'm going to vote against it. But it's, I just wanted to make it clear, it's not a performance issue, it's a town-wide issue.
Understood.
So I think, I think we all struggled with the dollars. I took a different view. There's a cost to turnover, there's a benefit cost to continuity, and I thought that that outweighed the increase. I think we were talking, weren't talking a lot of money between the 2% and the 2.6%. And I appreciate where Jim was coming from, and he was consistent throughout the whole process. So, you know, I'll second, you know, what Jim said earlier, that it was a really good process, it was respectful, you know. And I'm happy we got it done. I know other members of the board are happy that we got it done.
We're all happy we got it done.
So, you know, I guess it is what it is. But I do have concerns about the trickle effect. But I thought in this instance, it was worth the risk, whatever risk there is, so.
So let me, if I can say just a few words, I completely respect your position, Jim, on this. And that's why it's a democracy, you know, that's, people have the right and ability to say what they want, and I appreciate that. So, you know, I'm grateful to the board for showing the level of confidence. I mean, I don't think there's any question about the five of you showing that level of confidence, that's not the issue. So I appreciate that. And I want to just say that I'm really pleased to be here, and I'm pleased to be able to spend the next three years, hopefully the next five years here, to finish out my career. But I really, it's a great place, it's, I really have a great staff, great board, you know, we get a lot done together, and I think there's a lot that still needs to get done. And that's why I'm really appreciative of the fact that I'm going to be here, because I want to see those things through to fruition. So thanks again for your, for all your collective support.
Any other comments from the board? Doc, have a motion?
Yeah, move to approve the Town Manager's contract. Should I include the years?
Yeah.
Starting July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2020.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? All those opposed, respectfully.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're ahead of schedule. You want to go to the Personnel Board items?
Sure, you ready, Jim?
Just pulled up the hearing notice. I just pulled up the hearing notice. Get ready to read it.
Are we good? Okay. Well, good evening. Tracy Vasili on behalf of the Personnel Board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Selectmen members, Mr. Keegan and Ms. Bernard. On behalf of the Personnel Board, I'm before you tonight to present three new personnel policies for the board's review and approval. These policies have been written by our Town Labor Council, Jack Dolan, who has worked closely with the Personnel Board and the Assistant Town Manager in their development. Since October 2014, the Personnel Board, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, has updated or developed 12 personnel policies on such topics as equal employment opportunity, discrimination and sexual harassment, quarry and FMLA and parental leave. The majority, but not all of the work that has been done to date, has been on policies that are required by law. Since the last time our board appeared before you, we've developed three new policies which we're bringing before you this evening. They are the Standards of Conduct Civility Policy, Workplace Violence Policy, and the Social Media Policy. The Standards of Conduct Civility Policy would be the first of our kind in its town. However, similar type policies have been adopted by other towns to clearly articulate the town's expectations of their employees in regards to professionalism, civility, and respect for others. While the policy before you is written for town employees, board, commission, and committee members, and any person engaged by or acting on behalf of the town, it is our hope that it will become a standard to which all interactions, town interactions, are held. Whether it be a conversation that takes place at Town Hall between an employee and a resident, a comment made on the floor of town meeting, or an exchange between residents who have opposing viewpoints on a town issue. The second policy is the Workplace Violence Policy, which surprisingly to you all, it would actually be a new policy for our town. Would the lack of such a policy's existence become apparent during an HR audit conducted by the Assistant Town Manager? Like the other policies that have been brought before the board, this policy outlines its purpose, who the policy applies to, the definition of specific terms pertinent to the policies, procedures for addressing violations of the policy, and sanctions for those proven to violate it. Also, as part of this policy, it's the intention to have live workplace violence training conducted for all town employees by Jack Dolan, our Town Labor Council, and Police Chief Baker in fiscal year 2018. Like the other two policies being presented this evening, the Social Media Policy is a new policy that was developed by the Personnel Board in conjunction with Mr. Dolan and Ms. Bernard. It was created to replace the Internet Use Policy from 2005, which was more technology equipment-based. In the new policy, social media is described as online forums in which users participate in exchange of ideas, messages, and content, including blogs, microblogs, and social networking sites, including Twitter, Facebook, and LinkedIn. The intent of this policy is by no means to limit the First Amendment rights of any town employee, but to set clear expectations around the use of social media from both a personnel and professional perspective, so as to avoid situations where the town could be at risk around such topics as confidentiality, legal liability, and actual harm or disruption to the operation of the town. Like other policies introduced by our board, these three policies would apply to 15 town employees not covered under a collective bargaining agreement. If a collective bargaining agreement does not cover a particular policy, and law does require that such a policy to be in place, these policies would also cover those individuals under that collective bargaining agreement. As with the other policies that have been brought before the Board of Selectmen to date, these policies will be a critical component of the town's new employee orientation, and will also be reviewed with all current town employees to which they are applicable. In addition, for each policy, a written signature of acknowledgement will be required and will be kept on file with the Assistant Town Manager. It has also been recommended that these policies be reviewed with all board, commission, and committee members by either the Town Manager or Assistant Town Manager as part of the new board, commission, committee member orientation to take place each September.
Yeah, just one question on the Workplace Violence and the Conduct Civility. Is there, in the policy, it says report to your, either your immediate supervisor or department head. Can we just add a copy to whoever's the keeper of this policy? If it's you or the Assistant Town Manager? Just to make sure that it's followed through, that a supervisor doesn't just blow it off?
Understood.
If we could just have that other level of reporting?
Right. And that's consistent with some of the other policies. I'd be the reporting agent for those, so my position would be...
Yeah, I don't want the employees to have to run to you. They should go to their supervisor, department head. But when they do the report, it should get trickled up to you as well.
Part of a checks and balances.
Yeah. Other than that, I think, yeah, I think these are obviously good policies to have. Clean up some of these gray areas.
I just have a question.
Yep.
Of the three policies, the Workplace Violence Policy, it excludes school committee, uh, school employees. And why would that be? The others didn't.
So I can answer that. Under, many years ago when ed reform took place, school departments are required and held to a set of standards where they have to produce training and policies for their own accreditation and Department of Education standards. So in a lot of cases, we share policies with the school, but they have their own set of policies covering them. For example, their social media policy is for, it's four different policies. It's a lot more complex than ours because, you know, dealing with students and web development, content development and stuff like that is educators. So sometimes we share a policy and other times we, they'll have to have their own. And we don't bargain with their employees, so.
Okay, but they do have their own workplace policies?
They have all the required policies.
They have very extensive policies.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Just for the board's verification, this is Jack Dolan, who's our HR Council.
Hi, Jack.
He's the one who helps to write all the policies. We did, we...
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Anybody on the board?
I had a very similar question to Ginny. Just wanted to see if the schools and town...
We collaborate a lot on those types of things. But there are certain things that that belong to them.
I ran the social media policy by the IT Director, the Joint Director of IT Operations, to make sure that he was comfortable with it. As, we also ran the Workplace Violence Policy past Chief Baker, who's an expert in the field. So we've vetted it with sort of the subject matter experts that we have in the town. And Jack was really great at assisting us with the Code of Conduct Civility Policy. There's all types of policies from all different towns. And, you know, we couldn't, we looked at it in many different ways, and we all felt comfortable that this was the most, the version that best showed the respect and professionalism, without being punitive, but just sort of expecting that everybody's going to rise to that level of civility.
Okay. We have to obviously approve these?
Right.
Individually or as a group?
Taken collectively. I don't think there's any reason...
I think it'd be good if we did them separately, just because we...
Amended one.
We, yeah, we have to amend two of them with the, to have it also report to the Assistant Town Manager, and then...
Once again, which were the two that we?
For Workplace Violence and Civility.
Okay, so let's do the first one. Move to approve the, sorry, just... Nah, I just hit the wrong button. Move to approve the Standards of Conduct Civility Policy.
As amended?
No, that one we didn't need amended. Oh, that one we do, as amended.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Move to approve the Workplace Violent Policy, as amended? As amended.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? And move to approve the Social Media Policy.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you very much. Nice job, please.
Great looking.
Good job.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Again, I apologize for not being there when you started, but it sounds like you didn't need me anyway.
All right, thanks, Jack.
Have a good evening.
All right, thank you.
At this point, I think I can be excused. Thank you all.
Thanks, Jim. We'll pass seven fifteen.
Yep. The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Section 181, and Section 183A, and Chapter 136, Section 4, Code of the Town of Foxborough, Chapter 229, and also Stadium Rules and Regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, June 13, 2017, beginning at 7:15 PM in the Foxborough High School Media Center, 120 South Street, to review the application submitted by MPS LLC for U2, the Joshua Tree Tour. This event is proposed for Gillette Stadium. Application for this event is on file at the Office of Selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Welcome.
Thank you. Jesse Inos with Gillette Stadium.
George Bell, Stadium Advisory Committee.
Here before you this evening to ask for the permit for the U2 Joshua Tree Tour with opening act, The Lumineers, on Sunday, June 25. We have had U2 at this stadium before, about 10 years ago. We had them in '09, had two dates with a similar setup. Actually, the setup has a GA floor. We had a GA floor then as well. It is, it's an incredibly hot ticket. It was a great event 10 years ago. It's on the road now, and we're getting lots of good feedback from our sister venues as we followed up with them. It is actually, it was ranked just today, the hottest ticket on ticket resale sites this summer across the nation. So it's really in demand. It's sold out entirely, so we're anticipating 54,000 people in the building. We are requesting a lot time of 2:30, but again, the ultimate decision is made by public safety officials. The gate opening would be 5:00, and the start time is 6:30, and the end time, requesting 11:15. And the floor is GA, like I mentioned. We had a GA floor in 2009, and then we also had a GA floor for the Metallica show a few weeks ago. Couple of takeaways from it that I know our public safety is working through and our stadium officials are working through, but all in all, it was really successful. We didn't have any incidents on the floor, and that's a much younger and radio crowd. So we don't anticipate any issues with this crowd at all. It is a Live Nation show, just as Metallica was, and so we are using Al Dotley as a consultant, as we do with all of our Live Nation shows. We have requested the MBTA service, and it's a conversation that we're having with them right now. I do hope, because given the demographic, I do hope that the MBTA can make accommodations and make it work. It is a Sunday, so it's not a non-conventional ask, but we are going back and forth with them, and hopefully we'll be all set. So it is looking good. It's not confirmed yet, but it's looking good that we will have MBTA service. We will continue to operate the Uber lot, which we did for the first time for a concert for Metallica back in May, and it was really well received. We will continue to operate the taxi lot as well. It was nice having the Uber lot in place. The taxi lines were significantly reduced. It gave fans another option of getting home, and it helped speed up the exit time from the venue. And especially with this being a Sunday evening show, you know, people are going to want to get home as soon as possible and get back to work. So I don't think, George, if I've missed anything, but I think that's pretty much all the pertinent details for this one.
Oh, you didn't miss anything. I was just, I'd like to comment in relation to the general admission. I had a bit of, it had been a while, and I get forgetful. So I went to the Metallica show to observe it, and I was impressed. I have to say that, because I was concerned about 10,000 people and no barriers and all standing. But they create their own level. There was really much more space than I thought. I was envisioning maybe people would just crowd to the front, and they didn't. It was, I thought, really well done. Otherwise, we as a committee reviewed this and would recommend to you for approval.
Just to add, the public safety officials have reviewed these plans and worked very closely with MPS to try and make sure that the design of the GA area was such that it provided for appropriate safety precautionary exits, that type of thing. So fortunately, it worked out really well.
With the addition of the Uber lot, are we finding more cars on North Street or about the same? Really no impact of cars?
The Uber lot actually doesn't use North Street at all. Yeah, the Uber lot is just on Route 1. And all of the drivers, we actually have a program with Uber, so if you are an Uber driver, you are specifically directed to use your nav system that Uber controls routes you on all state-numbered highways, so that they aren't coming through any backroads or running through any neighborhoods, or staying right on state-numbered highways and going right to. The lot is actually, it's Lot 15, so it's right by Bassco Shops.
Are you guys using that for anything other than concerts, or is it just concerts, the Uber lot?
We started using it this season for football, and it was really successful. There's a tie-in too with football, with Patriots, with Patriots 365. So if you are like a season ticket member, you can also be earning credits towards your account if you take Uber. And so we've done that to both encourage responsible driving and then also to give, to add another element to our loyalty plan. So it was really well-received this entire football season. We started piloting it in October, and so we thought it was ready to get up and running for concerts, and it's been, it's been great so far.
What about like during, like a Friday night, Saturday night? I noticed there, it almost looks like the parking lot across from like Davio's or the main parking lot, there's new signs that say Uber lot this way. Are people using, are the Uber drivers like on the weekends, like now, like going to that one parking lot? Is that the?
Non-concert nights?
It's a different, yeah, it's a different lot that they're using. It's one closer to the north retail that they use for like picking up people who have gone out to dinner or whatever at the Patriot Place, or like the movies. They use, I'm not positive, but I think that they are using, I know that they're using one of the north retail lots. I think that they're using the one that actually is the closest to Route 1. And just like, as ride sharing is becoming more and more pervasive just in our society, it's something that we're seeing escalate at Patriot Place, which is great.
Yeah, because I know when Uber first came out, my kids were like, it was hard to get one up there. But now it seems like, you know, it's everywhere up there.
Yeah, you have a lot of options, which is really nice.
That's good.
I'll tell you, from my own personal experience, I was in Chicago two weeks ago, and I used one like at least four or five times, and it was great. And not only that, but then when I came home, I had a late flight coming home. I had one at 2:30 in the morning, at 2:00 o'clock in the morning. They showed up, there was no problem at all. It was great.
I was about to start using them, but then I had to realize I had to download an app, so.
I got lost there, so.
One of these days.
Any other questions from the board? Venus is a, Ginny, you have anything?
Nope.
Venus is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that have any questions, concerns, comments?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Move to approve the application submitted by MPS LLC for the U2 Joshua Tree Tour, date of June 25.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Thank you.
George, I don't take you as a Metallica fan. But I'm glad you like the concert.
Definitely feel my age. And then I read the reviews in the paper the next day. It was like the best concert ever done ever.
Thanks, George.
Definitely not in our music scene. Have a good night.
Do some action items.
Yeah. Okay. Move to approve the 5-2-17 Board of Selectmen minutes?
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Move to approve the 8th Annual Harvard Pilgrim Finish at the 50, at Patriot's Place, from Monday, July 3, from 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing...
No further. I always jump at the gun.
All those in favor?
Move to approve the 31 Commercial Parking Permit Renewals, all set to expire on 6:30, 2018.
Second.
Should that be 2017?
No. They renew on July 1 and go for 2018, till 2018.
Oh, I see. Okay, yep, sorry.
Motion made, second. Under discussion. Have these all gone through Planning Board and have already gotten approved?
I have a discussion point at the very end of the Excel spreadsheet, parentheses out... Parenthesis outstanding lot number twenty-four. What does that mean?
Whose lot is that?
I don't know, but there's no lot number twenty-four on the list. It goes twenty-twenty-nine on this list, and then at the bottom says total fees paid, and then under the total fees paid says outstanding lot number twenty-four.
Can't bring that up.
Yeah, it looks like it's just a note.
Do we have a lot twenty-four?
We may, it might not be up for renewal though.
Right.
Yeah, I can check.
That's more likely the case.
Okay. They don't all renew the same time?
If, if.
Depends where it is.
Yeah, depends, depends what you use. If you may have one, so just for football. Could be that type of thing, could renew later.
Okay.
So it just means it could come back, like at the next year.
Yeah.
Okay.
What does the need W C certificate?
Workman's column.
Work, is that what it is?
Yeah.
So we don't actually give them these licenses. These are all approved, but not, we don't issue them until we have everything that we need from them.
So motions made, second. Some comments under discussion. All those in favor?
Move to approve a block, block party application submitted by Amy Spugnardi for Philip Lane between number five and number nine on eight twenty-six from three P. M. to eight P. M. with a rain date of eight twenty-seven.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Move to approve a gift donation in the amount of a hundred and fifty dollars to the Foxborough Cultural Council from the Moms Club of Foxborough.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Move to approve a gift donation in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five dollars to the Veteran Services to the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from Christine St. Pierre.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of fifty dollars to the Veteran Services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from Albert and Joan Sosio.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of twenty-five dollars to Veteran Services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from Ruth and David Borman.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Should Chris do the next one? I don't know how that works.
Yeah, Veteran Services move to accept gift donation of a hundred dollars for the Iraq Afghanistan War Memorial from the Elfman family.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion?
Thanks, Doc.
You're welcome.
See you none. All those in favor?
And all of steam. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of a hundred dollars to Veteran Services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from Thomas and Lucille Saban.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of one hundred dollars to Veteran Services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from Joan Gallivan, nominee trust.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of twenty-five dollars to Veteran Services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from Doug, Douglas and Cheryl Seuss.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of one thousand two hundred and two dollars to recreation for tuition of two children to attend the Booth Summer Program and credit for field trips from Partners in Patriotism Fund.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to recreation for five children to attend the Booth Summer Program from the IGO PTO, IGO Cares.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of one hundred dollars to the Boyd and Library for the Home Services Program Materials from Massachusetts Project Three Fifty-One, Inc.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars to the Boyd and Library for the Children's Department from the Moms Club of Foxborough.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Selectmen's update. First of all, I want to congratulate the Foxborough High School class of two thousand and seventeen. As far as graduations go, that was, that was a pretty good one. Andre DeBari did a, did a really good job with his, with his speech. So it was more, more of a performance. It was, it was, it was well done. I also want to thank the Sage School for inviting us, Bill and I, to their commencement last Friday. If anybody on the board has a chance to attend their graduation ceremony, there's about seventeen kids that graduate, but it's hard to believe that those kids are actually eighth graders.
I, I could tell you, it's stunning to hear the speeches that they give. You'd swear they were graduating from college, not from high school, not from eighth grade. It's amazing to me.
Yeah, they do.
Extraordinary.
They really do. They really do a good job. I also want to thank Monica Fissler and the rest of the Founders Day Committee, that I don't know how they have the energy and stamina and wherewithal to put it together year after year, but my hat's off to, to that whole group. They did a fantastic job once again. I'm sure I'm leaving some other stuff out. A lot happened in the last two weeks. But anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I've got one more thing. I'm the Selectmen representative to the Napontet Reservoir Commission, and usually during the summer, they have two meetings during the summer, one on seven thirteen and one on eight-ten. But anybody that's interested not only in attending the meeting if they want to, but getting a, a tour of the Napontet Reservoir, six o'clock on both those dates, there's going to be a boat tour to see exactly from the water side how big that reservoir is. When I joined the commission last year, coincidentally, a couple of months later, they had the same program, and I took a tour, and being in town for twenty-seven years, first time on the reservoir, and it's big. It's big. They've done a phenomenal job maintaining that reservoir over the years. It's a lot of work month after month, and working with the state, working with the Conservation Commission, working with the town. The committee's done a great job. But anybody that wants to take a ride at the Selectmen, you know, certainly staff, let me know, and I'll make arrangements, and we'll all meet and go over and take a boat ride. It's really pretty cool.
Pick a day like today.
We, we did when I went last year. It was a gorgeous day.
That's good.
And it's at six, so the sun's going down, and it's really nice.
They've done a tremendous job of cleaning up that reservoir.
And, and maintaining it, and the rules and the regulations, and.
It's turned into a real asset. It really has.
Fighting, not Town Hall, but state government throughout the years. They've done a wonderful job. But let me know if anybody wants to take a ride.
And I believe the Relay for Life is this weekend coming up?
Yep.
And it's not too late to get your donations in to support your, the teams. It's a great cause, and they're always doing a nice job.
Thank you. That's all we got, Bill.
Okay.
Town Matt. Newly rehired Town Matt.
Well, thank you for that. I'm just looking for something, because I, we got a notification today that, that Town of Foxborough was, was actually named one of the top, it was included in the list of top one hundred places to live to purchase a home in Massachusetts today, on the lender's list, I believe, so we're listed as number sixty-four on that list. So that's, that's a great honor to have that. It's also, it means, it, it, it actually gives people some confidence in the value of their homes here too, because it, it means that we're, we're a highly sought after community in Massachusetts. So it's a good, that's a good thing. It's a good thing to have that, and it's a nice honor to have that, had to be named to that list. So what we're up to, up to right now, we're paying, preparing for the Financial Summit, which is to be held next, next Tuesday night at the, at the McGinty Room. So hopefully we'll be able to make it to that. That's, it's got a lot of information on that, but this is just a first of a few meetings that we're going to have to try and identify what the priorities are, what, what people are comfortable with, and where we, where we've been, and where we should go, what we, what we've done, and what we need, what we still need to do.
What's the response from other departments?
I think we've had a lot of positive feedback from folks, members of the Finance Committee, members of the School Committee, School, School Department, are all saying this, they really look forward to the conversation and the discussion, so, so far so good.
I think it's important to, to point out that it's a discussion. It's not, it's not to point fingers or.
No, not at all.
It's, it's a discussion. It's a, it's an opportunity for, for people to learn about the budget process.
Right.
I think, I think it's, it's been a long time coming. I, I, I actually, I'm looking forward to it.
I think, I liken it a lot to developing a master plan, where you, we have a master plan for lots of things that we do, but we don't really have a master plan for finances. And I think this is one where we can actually have that conversation, come up with ideas. Anything goes when you have a conversation like that, because it really is a document that has to be a living, breathing document in the community. And not only that, but it gives folks like us, who are trying to carry on the, the day-to-day chores of making sure the community is reflective of what people want, that that document actually will serve as a sort of our, a guiding light, if you will, to try and navigate through the finances of the town into the future. So we're really, we're looking forward to that as well from the staff end. We're preparing for the move into the, into the new building. We're still planning for June twenty-third, which is next week, but I wouldn't be surprised if that, that they could push by, by about a week. We're, we're just running into a few last minute things, but I, I still think it'll be, it's still a possibility it will happen next week, and it certainly will happen the following week if, 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 if that gets, gets pushed one week. The building team, the, the, the contract, the architects and building officials are all working toward that goal of being in the building before July first. The SEMREC, or the, the new Southeastern Mass Regional Emergency Communications Center, Executive Director Search is ongoing. We committees, the committee continues to work on a regular basis, meaning now, now meeting a little bit less frequently, because we've got a lot of the, the details in place. We've got the grant application before the state right now, waiting to hear back from state nine-one-one. We hope to hear from them probably within the next week or two on the status of that grant or application. We received today, we have about thirty applicants so far, thirty.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, thirty-four, as of today. So that's, that's what keeps, we're getting draw, and continue to draw attention for that. We opened bids today for the Assessment Center process, and bids fortunately come in below what our estimated costs were, so we're actually moving ahead in a positive direction on that front as well. Road improvements are ongoing all over town, in case you haven't noticed. I know a lot of people have noticed. We ask residents and businesses for their patience while the work is being, being performed. In some cases, there are two levels of treatment that are, that are applied to the road. One is an initial treatment, and there's a secondary treatment that comes in after that. So I think, you know, in some cases, we're hearing folks that, you know, I, I hope this isn't the final treatment, and often cases, that's the case, that's not the case, where we're going to have another additional treatment that goes on top of that. So that process is ongoing as we speak.
Is there a way Roger can put something in the paper to let people know that? Because I got a lot of calls first thing in the spring.
We've actually been doing hangers on people's doors and, and getting the word out that way. And unfortunately, if, if, if people see it hanging on their door, don't throw it away. Read it and pay attention to it, because it's, and they, they try and put the word out in the websites and the different local, different media sources, but you never believe we're going to miss somebody. And when we miss those people, those are ones that call us, but then we will, we're easy to, we're able to address that. So if you get those calls, feel free to direct them and redirect them to us, we'll have to address them for you.
Yeah, I, I think today's world, everybody's visual, you know, they want to be able to look it up. So if anybody's interested to check out the process, it's a, the, the method that the town's been using the last couple of years, it's called the Cape Seal Process. You can YouTube it, and you can go through, and you can see the different, the different phases.
Right.
It's, depending on the weather, it's really weather dependent. The hotter, the better.
Right.
So obviously, the, the first step can be done anytime. You just have to wait. It's anywhere from a three to six week process.
Right.
From start to finish, and like I said, it's, it's all weather dependent. So with the warmer weather, they'll be able to put the slurry mix on for the final coat and.
And that looks almost like a brand new pavement, pavement surface, so we're using that application. It seems to work. It's also very cost efficient, too.
Right. Yeah, because you don't have, you know, all the. Well, you don't have to raise the, the catch basins. You don't have to raise the, the shut offs for the most part. You can do a little bit of recreating. So it's, it's very cost effective. You don't worry about raising all the curbing to accommodate the asphalt, so.
And we were able to get, Route one forty was, was repaved this past week as well, so that's, that road is, that work is done for that section of the road. The state's going to try and address the other remaining section of that. We don't know when, but we're hopeful it'll get done later this year. The Motor Vehicles Vehicle Policy Subcommittee met for this first time this morning. I thought it was a very productive meeting. We did schedule a second meeting though for the, for July eleventh, again, meeting over at the library, so I thought it was a good discussion, initial discussion, to get all the issues on the table. I thought it was good participation, and a lot of, a lot of information came out during that process. The solar documents, and there were a lot of them, are basically finalized now for all the, for the new solar fields. There have been two new solar fields that we've taken on. And we'll start seeing some real credits towards that, towards, towards our budgets during July and August, from what, what I'm told. So they, I'm not a hundred percent sure if they're, if they're fully activated at this point, but at least one of them is very close to being, being done, and the other one is close, is really right behind it. So we're, we're, we're going to see those, those credits that are coming in the next fiscal year for sure.
Can I ask you a question about the one on Elm Street?
Sure.
If you're standing in the highway garage looking at the solar field, to the right of there, looks like they created a temporary parking lot for construction. Is that what that is?
It's a temporary, yeah, just for that. Yeah, yeah.
The town plan on using that for anything else?
I don't believe so. I mean, we have a new, we have a new storage facility that's beside that, so we don't, it's primarily just a parking area.
On the, right next to that?
Yeah, on the other side of the trees.
Like a pile of dirt and some others?
It's a boneyard, if you will.
So that's, that's the highway department?
That's highway department. They own that, and then the.
They got a plan on securing that at all?
They were supposed to do some additional plantings around that to, to, you know, buffer it.
To block it from the.
Well, I mean, I went by probably three weeks ago on a weekend, and there was a guy in a pickup truck loading up dirt into it, so, I mean, I, I didn't even know what it was. I thought it was just a temporary construction lot. So, I know in the past, you know, when the compost pile was there, there was free dirt, free wood chips. So I'm assuming that the gentleman just assumed it was free.
Well, I'll ask about that tomorrow, Chris, because I, I don't, you know, that's, that's a good question. I don't know what, what, I don't know if they were going to plan to put a gate on it or not, but.
It seems to me they were, they were going to do some, like, something, like fencing or shrubbery or something.
Right.
To hide from the, from the, the neighbors were concerned about it.
Yeah, so some additional.
They talked about that a long time ago.
Right. So, and I think the area in front of that, that you, they were using for parking, they, I, I think the Horseshoe League still continues to park their vehicles there during the horseshoe tournaments. So they'll continue to do that after this. And then on a, on a very positive note, Chief Baker, Police, Police Chief Baker achieved one of his, one of his goals recently, become by, by being named to the US Supreme Court bar. So he's an attorney, and, and it's, it's actually. So he's an attorney and, uh, and it's, it's actually, it's not uncommon to see that happen where you, you didn't have the ability to actually make a case before the U.S. Supreme Court. What was unusual was that, uh, he was asked personally by, uh, by Justice Thomas to come to Washington to be sworn in. So he, on Monday, he went, he went, he flew down with, with a number of his family members and, um, and was, was sworn in by Justice Thomas, um, in, 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 in his personal chambers, and it was, uh, he said it was quite, it was quite a thing. He's, and, um, and then he also, uh, a, a number of them had questions about some of the other members, and so the justice called some of them, some of the other members that, while they were there, they came down to say hello as well, so he got to meet a lot of them. So it was, it was quite an event, he said, uh, and, uh, he was, it was really quite an honor to, to be, to be put in that position, so. He's not, doesn't have a new job, so he's not, not going anywhere. He said, I want to be clear about that part of it, but he was, uh, it was truly a great honor for him and I'm, I'm very pleased for him, so.
Well, un, unlike the NBA, we're going to hold him to his contract.
Yeah, there you go. That's right. That's right. Not going anywhere fast. But I, again, congratulations also to the Founders Day Group. Uh, fortunately couldn't make it because I was at my fortieth high school reunion. And if that is an event, I don't know what is. Uh, but it was great to see some of my classmates who I haven't seen in literally forty years. It was great to see some of them. And, uh, I think, by, people do change, uh, rather significantly in some cases. Um, others do look pretty much the same, which is great to see, too, so.
At the end of the night, they stop looking like they did when they were eighteen.
Yeah, that's right. They didn't change that whole much, a whole lot by then. So that's it. Thank you.
Beth?
Um, yep. Just to reiterate Bill's, uh, Regional Dispatch update, our Executive Director posting closes in two days, so if anybody's interested in, um, it is on the town's website. We have a page for SEMREC, which is the Southeastern Mass Regional Emergency Communication Site. We've received thirty-four applicants so far. Um, as Bill referred to, we opened RFPs today for the Assessment Center. That's going to happen as part of the process. And, um, we'll be screening resumes this Thursday when it closes. Um, our subcommittee's been very active and, uh, we're the Executive Director Screening Committee and, um, I really appreciate the, the cooperation. We have two, um, two fire chiefs and two police chiefs and myself on that committee. Um, one of the, um, other things going on, um, as we look to move into the new building, we've, uh, convened a Meeting Room Policy Committee because, uh, over the course of, you know, time, there's been very limited meeting space around town, and now with the advent of the new Selectmen's Meeting Room, um, we worked with I.T. and, um, some of the other departments that have meeting rooms, like library and public safety and council on aging, and we've come, we're trying to come up with a standardized policy for meeting room use, uh, what the capacities of each room are, uh, some of the rules and regulations about what kind of groups might take priority, if it's a border, town border committee or a town employee group versus, um, an outside group. And, uh, we're going to look to, for internal use, have an online scheduling system for that. Um, so that, that meeting met, uh, that group met. We're also, um, looking at, uh, all of our training, doing an audit of where we are with all these new policies coming on board, making sure that everybody's getting trained and understanding the policies as well. Um, one of the things we're looking to do is a darkness to light training. We haven't, uh, done that with some of the new employees. That's coming up, uh. So if any of the board members haven't done that, we have one on June twenty-second, and we also have a free online training that people can take. Um, and then.
Can I, can, what is that?
Darkness to Light is, um, the Child Safety Committee, formerly known as Child Sexual Abuse Prevention Committee, um, has, um, use, using this program, started about four years ago, I think in twenty-eleven, doing this training for anyone who comes into contact with children. Um, so, uh, they're the ones who also are sponsoring legislation to expand the, um, mandatory reporting law. So all coaches and, um, volunteers at the schools and people who deal with children are required to do this training. It's about a two-hour training. You can either do it online or in person, and it just tells you about the warning signs to look for to how to protect children um, from, you know, people who may want to, uh, harm them. So we made a commitment, uh, before mine and Bill's time, it was a commitment made that all town employees would be trained, so, you know, um, every time we have a new batch, we round up new employees and we're doing that, so.
And when is it again?
It's, um, it's June twenty-second at ten A.M. And, um, it's going to be at the Mill Street Recreation Complex. I think some of our new recreation employees will be participating. Um, we have a couple of new Council on Aging employees and, um, if Town Hall's not moving, some of the Town Hall people will be there as well. We also have a free online, um, I can send you the online training for employees as well. Um, and, and then finally, we, um, have been asked by the library, uh, director to perform, to do a strategic planning session with the library staff. The library trustees are working on their strategic plan, kind of a long-range plan for the library. So they wanted some employee feedback, so tomorrow we'll be running two sessions of, um, a SOAR analysis with the, um, library staff at nine and at two to get their ideas on this strategic plan and what they envision for the library's future. And we're just continuing on with our performance evaluations are due, um, this week and also multiple recruitment efforts are underway, so we've got a lot of, a lot of balls in the air and, uh, keeps it interesting.
Just, um, for the evocation of the public, um, the questions, we, I get questions every so often as to whether or not we're going to hold a formal ceremony for opening the new Town Hall. Uh, I've said it before, but again, just to repeat it to everyone, so in case they, they hadn't heard it the first time. We wouldn't plan to do that till probably sometime in September. And, and the reason is, is because we want to make sure that the, the entire project is complete. We're going to a new parking lot to be built, the new, uh, building, the old building to be removed and to raise. And, um, so we'll have the ability to park people there and to also, um, allow people to be on a safe site without any kind of, uh, concerns for the construction equipment, et cetera. So that's our plan at this point, so we, we will do more or less a soft opening, if you will, for, um, uh, sometime in, uh, late June. And then we'll continue on with, with working out of that new facility, but not do the formal opening till sometime in September. Then it also gives the people, gives people in the town, you know, if they're away for the summit, to, to be home, um, and, and actually participate in, in the opening, uh, when that occurs. So that's our plan.
Bill, um, in regards to the move, is that going to be, are you physically going to be moving during the day? Is it going to be after hours? If you're moving during the day, is Town Hall going to be open? Is it going to be closed?
We will have, we will go, we're going to try and keep, um, services provided, but on a very limited basis. It'll be like during a two, a one and a half day period. So we're trying to start on a Thursday and finish up by Friday. Uh, maybe even go into the weekend with some cases, with some people, but, um, the plan is to, is to try and we're, we're not going to be able to, to do all services because it just, all equipment has to be up and running and people have to be in the buildings and et cetera. So it could be a little bit of a delay, but on, on the third, the Thursday and Friday of next week, if that happens. If that doesn't happen, it'll, what, most likely be the following week, uh, when that does occur.
We're planning to have a team in place at each place and, um, so if a question comes up and someone's phone or computer isn't connected in the new building, we'll still have service in the old building so that we can sort of run, run a parallel.
I'm just, I'm just thinking about customer service, directing people. Do they have to go to the new building? Do they have to go to the?
We're going to have people, like, uh, we have sort of a team that we're, um, trying to compile to have.
Yeah, we'll have a transition team in place to handle.
Yeah.
Service continuity, yeah.
You know, want to be able to get people to the right, to the right location.
Right, and, you know, few and few people actually do come to Town Hall because we're doing more things online, but, but to those people that need something, a birth certificate, things of that nature, you know, we're still going to encourage them to come in. Um, we'll do whatever we can. I mean, the problem is that, you know, it's making sure all our records are in place in order to do that and access that information, so we'll do the best we can under the circumstances and, um, you know, certainly customer service is still remains a priority one for us.
Good. Edit?
Mm-hmm.
That's it.
Move to adjourned.
Second.
Oh, no better.
Motion second and twice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.